Mr. Warden, we did just step over good news and celebrations.
Oh, did we? My apologies. And now we've adjourned. Can I go back?
You're muted. Yes. Let's call the Committee of the Whole to order and then we could have good news and celebrations stood there with council's permission.
My apologies on that, folks. Give me a quick second here. Switch over. Okay, so I'll call Committee of the Whole to order. Is there any declaration of interest? Seeing none, we will move to good news and celebrations. So anything that anyone wants to announce, just raise your hand and I will acknowledge you. I don't see anyone's hands. Not to suggest at all that there isn't any good news. There's always good news happening. Counselors, whoever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a quick good news. The Blue Mountain Village Association is again doing an early opening of their grant applications. So they have $15,000. They're looking to distribute 15 $1,000 grants to organizations within our community and the surrounding communities that are perhaps smaller organizations that, you know, are struggling with funding these days. And so those applications are open now and or I think this week anyway. And then there is an opportunity and that process will be relatively rapid. So if there are any organizations out there that wish to apply, I think it would be a good opportunity to top up your funding a little bit.
Good. Thank you very much. I see Counselor Keveney next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everyone. I know everyone has lots of development going on in their communities, but there was an initial public session last night in Miford that is really quite exciting for us on six acres of waterfront property, the former Stanley Knight Flooring Company. And we've been looking forward to this announcement for some time now with a development inclusive of a 78-room hotel, 120 rental apartments, and 78 townhomes all overlooking Georgian Bay. And a boardwalk along the front is being proposed that we hope eventually could connect to Memorial Park. So it's just exciting news for us in Miford to think that we could finally be seeing a hotel on our waterfront. Thank you.
Very good, Counselor Keveney. Thank you for that. I don't see any other hands, Madam Clerk, so I think we can move on. We're on to item number three, which is our delegations. We have two. First, we're going to hear from, excuse me, Twan Peters. He's the CEO and President of ATEL. Come on with us.
I'm just moving him in as a panelist, Mr. Warden.
Okay. And by the way, his slides were available. It's at the, I guess it's in your packages if you're using your iPad, but also on the public website. The slides are there as well.
I'll start the video.
Start. There we go. Good morning. You ready to start?
Yes, we are. Good morning, sir, and welcome. You have the floor.
Good morning, everybody. Warden, counselors, thank you for the invitation. We're quite excited about what we're able to do. It's also kind of interesting that the SWIFT funding originated and started through the County of Gray. So I think there's a lot of kudos that need to be passed around. And we're fortunate enough to take part of it and win a substantial piece in the County of Gray. So what I'm thinking is, if that's okay with you, is kind of go a little bit of an overview of the project and then we can open the questions.
Very good, sir.
I could share the screen? Can everybody see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so a little bit about ATEL. We're local and have our office in Holstein. We've been around since 2010. Our mandate always has been rural broadband to improve rural communities. We currently have about 2,500 subscribers through wireless. We launched Fiber to the Home in 2017. Did a little bit of pilot projects and basically got our feet good and wet, so we knew what we were doing. Developed the processes. Right now, we have over 20 million committed to rural broadband. We secured about 12 million from SWIFT. We also won a project in Wellington, so we're first in connecting subscribers through a SWIFT network. We're also the first ones in completing a SWIFT project. Construction has already started in West Gray and Southgate. And our project will basically encompasses is within Southgate and West Gray, the majority of it. There's about 1,300 passed with a fiber to the home. And I forgot to put, yeah, oh, that's right. And 700 are going to be enabled with 5010 wireless. We kind of leveraged our wireless infrastructure to improve the quality of service for and higher capacities on our existing network. So much of the fiber goes to our existing towers. One of the biggest challenges we have is getting enough backhaul to the towers to distribute the signal. So it's a temporary sort of fix. I think the long goal is to get everything on fiber, but it gets more speeds and more bigger packages out to more people quicker. So it's a good tool for us to leverage what we have. In total, it's about 145 kilometers of fiber. We're hoping the first services will be starting in May. A lot of the project's going to take a little longer. We have certain areas in the Soggy Conservation Authority that we can't drill and connect until the water levels are down. Soggy Valley Conservation Authority has been very good to work with us. If the water levels go down sooner, they'll allow us to start sooner. And we are targeting completion for December 21st. This is a SWIFT network. It kind of shows the coverage. They have an excellent website. Encourage anybody to visit and expect most of them have been on it already. It's very intuitive and explains a lot. One of the challenges we have with the SWIFT applications is, as you can see, the large blue area there that's claimed to serve. Once an area is claimed to serve, that makes it ineligible. We actually had quite a bit designed for Gray Highlands as well, but we had to pull it off the shelf for the applications. And to the north, you can see the Explorer Net bids. And this is, the southern part is where we're building here. On our website, we do show the coverage area. And we also will be posting progress as the construction moves on. So clicking on that link will basically give you this map. It shows where all the fiber is going. We'll be updating dates and as things progress, so that people can check in and see how progress is going. We're also trying to advise where the construction is happening. And we're just setting up all the project management to keep this up to date. So one of the things we get is, what about us? I'm not getting fiber. So it's quite a, SWIFT is a good start. I think from the meeting we had the other day, it covers about 25% of the underserved homes, 20 to 20 to 25%. There's more coming. By no means are we done. We are making applications to the UBF Fund. Might be SWIFT 2.0. There's other grants out there as well. We are also committed to expanding fiber extensions through on our own budget. The municipalities have been great. Southgate and West Gray have been very supportive and very much appreciated. Any funds that we say we are going to be extending some of these fiber lines and try to meet those people. Requirements or wishes, I guess. Okay, I will. So the major communities, just to give a bit of an understanding, the primary connection will be in Durham. It'll be a Bell upstream. Eventually, that'll be connected to Shelburne, where we can get Ban Westman Rogers much more cost effectively. Because there's limited competition up here, the prices are a premium for us to connect as well. Through these networks, I think that's going to stimulate a lot of competition to get the overall cost down as well, but for us and for others. We are going to make the ability to, it's an open access network. People will be able to interconnect at any point. I believe this network has more than 500 interconnect points. It's going to cover the Village of Holstein, which is our hometown. We're really happy with that. Dromore, there's a lot of little communities along the way. Going over to Allen Park, up to subdivision of Forest Creek, near Elmwood, Abber Mill. Those are the primary targets that we did. One of the reasons the routes ended up this way, there's requirements for SWIFT to connect as many homes as possible for the least amount of money asked. So one thing that this model does, we end up picking pockets where the homes are more dense to make it more appealing, more appealing application. The entire network is designed to be able to expand into all the other areas. And we hope to accomplish some of that through the UBF Fund. And that's about it. So if there's any questions, we can go right to them. I get this back.
All right. See if we can see our members again. Thank you very much for that presentation. I see some hands and I would just say before I acknowledge those individuals, I'm personally really happy to see the project extended north on Allen Park Road there, where I know that there's a Telusat facility there in West Gray, that from the beginning, we were just talking about projects coming to Gray County. Telusat was one of the groups that was talking about a big need for redundancy in their service. So I'm really happy to see that that project will be fulfilled. We have questions, Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, everyone. And good morning, Twan. Not really a question, just a comment. I wanted to thank Twan for his efforts. And ATEL, we're pretty proud in Southgate here. It's a homegrown company that still is here. And we're real, real happy about that. I just, I wanted to be clear about one thing. I live in Dromore. Actually, I'm in the suburbs of Dromore. And there's absolutely no benefit to being a counselor in terms of whether the fiber goes past your home. It comes within. I can almost throw baseball to the end of the wire, but Twan tells me, be patient. All good things come to those that wait. So I wait with bated breath. Nonetheless, we're real happy to host the improvements that Twan is proposing for our community. And so those are my comments. Thanks again, Twan, for your efforts. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mill. And I can hear the violins playing. No, in all seriousness, you're not the only one in that circumstance.
Violence might be playing, but you can't hear them that good because there's no high speed.
Very well. Okay, Counselor Potter.
Thank you. And it is good that the cable is so close to Counselor Mill's house that he could walk out and drop a baseball. But my question is for Twan. Thank you for your presentation. It's great to see this proceeding across the county. We are in the midst of planning a public meeting. I hope you've received an invitation to that, and I hope you will take part. If not, let me know and I'll see that you do get one. But it will be a chance to introduce yourself to us and our, to our public. And there won't be any public questions, just a chance for you to explain what you do and what services are available. And we'd love to have you take part in that. Thank you.
Good. And Counselor Potter, the date of that meeting?
Sorry, yes, it's February the 16th. I believe the mayor will correct me if I'm wrong. It's 3:30, I believe.
Excellent. And how can people get more details about joining that meeting?
Just get in touch with me and I will see that you get information because the public can attend. They can send in written questions after. This is really a chance to hear what is available to us. We have a few indications of interest already and we're looking for more.
Excellent, sir.
That will be virtual. We will send the link.
Thank you. Counselors, whoever, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. And I'd like to thank Twan for his presentation. And I'm very impressed with this project. I'm less impressed with some others, but this one truly seems to serve a rural area. I think, you know, this is one of the short term of SWIFT. I did look at all of their projects and they serve areas with an average of 17.4 houses per kilometer. So there's many rural areas in Ontario where obviously there aren't 17 houses per kilometer. And very few of those areas are getting served. Yet projects like the Garrafaxah Woods one in the corner of Orangeville, where they served a small number of high-end homes with an average value of about $2.8 million. You know, so I'm very happy to see projects like Twan's here, where we are actually serving rural areas as well as some of the towns. Because, you know, certainly some of the projects seem to be picking the high-density areas out. And I'm very concerned that five or 10 years down the road, all of the high-density, high-end clients will have been served. And there will be very little left in the rural areas. And so it will be impossible to get people to actually service these rural areas once the adjacent high-density areas have been served. So I'm very pleased with Twan. And as Mayor Potter said, we are, you know, launching, we've launched our Rabbit Task Force, Rural Access to Broadband Inter technology. And we are inviting service providers to come and introduce themselves. And we will then work with the service providers to support any grant applications they make to program, other programs as well as SWIFT. And facilitated access also to rural roads. I know there's been some very interesting projects done where people have actually allowed the plowing of shoulder roads to insert the fiber without, you know, the need to do extensive trenching. And then so that, there are ways the municipality can help. So I'm very pleased to see that your project did go ahead. And it is one of the better ones in terms of serving our truly rural areas.
Thank you very much, Counselors. Whoever, Mr. Peters, I don't know if you want to respond to the issue around density?
So you're absolutely correct, Counselor Silver. That's sort of the way this project worked. That's what determined a lot of our roots. It might be interesting to see that the UBF Fund takes a totally different approach. They want comprehensive coverage and they want that last house a mile down the road covered as well. So in combination, if we're successful, that'll really, really solve the people that are left out, the less dense populated areas. So we're hopeful. Whether it's not, whether it's us or somebody else, I think there's lots of windows that are going to be of opportunity that might close that gap. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor Robinson, I'm going to be going to you next, but I would add on the subject of density, that Counselor, however, is not wrong in identifying that many of the projects seem to be focusing on those higher-density areas. And it's not the fault of the internet service providers, by the way. It was a criteria of the funding, you know, where persons who are providing the fund say, we want you to pass as many premises as possible. So it was a big focus on getting as many premises passed as possible. So naturally, you're going to see the proposals come in the way they do. But if we are going to get to those last mile type projects, internet service providers are going to be, are going to have to be highly incentivized. And we're going to have to have a change in this philosophy of we give higher marks for how many premises you reach. Counselor Robinson, you are next.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning to everyone. Twan, I just want to say thank you very much for the detailed update. It's very nice to see that there are broadband projects taking place in Gray County just to service our residents, businesses, and tourists, you know, when they come back again. One of the points that I want to make, and I've been hearing it throughout this presentation, it's a local rural company improving access to broadband to our local rural communities. So to that, Twan, I say very well done. And Warden Hicks, I think it's important that SWIFT was also involved in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't see any other hands.
No, sir.
Good. So with that said, Mr. Peters, I want to thank you very, very much for your presentation. Exciting to see these things happening, certainly. And I would say that about 50% of the SWIFT projects to date are with your sort of large internet service providers, you know, Rogers and Bell. But about 50% is small internet service providers like ATEL. And I would dare say that if we are going to get those last mile projects done, it's going to be the small internet service providers who are going to step up and get that done. We'll see in the course of time if that's, that comes to fruition, but that's my guess. Thank you very much again for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have next John Farmer, Coordinator of Violence Prevention, Gray Bruce. And he's going to give us an update.
Mr. Warden, his time is at 10:30. So I'm wondering, with your permission, if we go to the consent agenda and then we can circle back to Mr. Farmer?
Very good. We can do that. So we have the, that's item number five. The consent agenda is being moved by Counselor Mill and seconded by Counselor Mackey. Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda? Anything need to be pulled? I don't see any hands.
Seeing none, then. Sorry. Yes, I do see Counselors, however.
Counselors, however, go right ahead.
Yes, I'd like to pull items A, C, and E. That would be the Hannah World and Sound Task Force, the SWIFT project update, and the Blue Mountain Village Association request for support.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, then I will call the question. All those in favor of the consent agenda, except A, C, and E. Is there anyone opposed? Sorry. I'm messing you guys up and you're doing very well when I say I'm in favor, but I mean to say, is there anyone opposed? I see none. So that too is carried. We still have five minutes, Madam Clerk. I'm in your hands.
I think Savannah's report on the Clean Energy Frontier project will be fairly short. So I think we could probably proceed to that, just in case there are others that are interested in hearing Mr. Farmer's presentation.
Of course. All right. So that we will deal with item 6A. Savannah, you're on deck. Moved by Counselor Carlton, seconded by Counselor O'Leary. And Savannah, you have the floor.
Good morning, Council. Thank you. As you will know, this is a report following up from the delegation that we had from Chad Richards in December, asking for the county to join officially as part of the Clean Energy Frontier Program. We promised that we would bring a report back just to give you a little bit more context as to what the program is, how it's shifting, and give you a little bit of history too, because we actually joined the Nuclear Economic Development and Innovation Initiative in 2016, when Bruce Power started working towards the major component replacement and brought the three counties together in a partnership. So since that time, it's been an incredibly successful partnership. We've seen 60, more than 60 suppliers locate locally. And we've worked together to help prepare for the influx of demand on our skilled trades because of this major component replacement. So in September of 2020, Bruce Powers County and the Nuclear Innovation Institute brought this group back together and looking to enter a new phase known now as the Clean Energy Frontier Program. And what we see with this is a real shift now towards education and marketing and telling the story of what clean energy looks like in the region and in Ontario. So there are five different goals that are being proposed. We still need to go through the regional committee to approve these goals, which is why we have a brief attached to the report for you, just to give you that background. But it hasn't been formally adopted by that larger council yet. What we do see, as I mentioned, is that shift to the marketing side of things. And we want to make sure as we go forward, knowing that there's going to be a lot of storytelling and a lot of education to come, just to make sure that you're comfortable as we go through each of those pieces. So what we're asking, Council, is to formally become part of the Clean Energy Frontier Program. And we recommend bringing a staff report back after each of those regional liaison committees, so that we can bring Council up to speed on what the direction is, what the messaging is, what those tactics and strategies are, to make sure that you are on board with the messaging, with the direction as we go through this, because we know things can change very quickly. And we just want to make sure that we keep that transparency. So there is a brief attached if you have any questions. But otherwise, both the CAO, Kim Lingrove, and myself, we are appointed members to the regional liaison committee. So we are sitting there on behalf of Gray County and we'll bring this information back. And then City of Owen Sound and Town of Hannover also have a seat on the committee as part of that larger strategy. That is the report. And in a nutshell, if you have any questions, please let me know.
I'm muted. Thank you very much, Savannah. Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to then call the question. All those in favor, sorry. I've got it right yet. Anyone opposed to the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to say that that too is carried. We're still a minute or two ahead of schedule. Can we go ahead, Madam Clerk?
Go ahead with our delegation. Yes.
Thank you. They're here and ready? John Farmer?
I am. If everyone can hear me, then I'll say that we're doing well. Good morning, Counsel. Thank you for, yeah, thank you for accepting my delegation. I had originally reached out hoping to speak ahead of December the 6th, but you were a popular destination and the delegation slots were full ahead of that time. It's fortunate, though, that we were able to schedule for now because I'm, I'll be speaking today about some recent releases and current projects. I'm now going to attempt to share the slideshow that you would have had in your package. And as with all internet-based meetings, nothing will go wrong and you'll be able to see and hear everything perfectly. I am representing today Violence Prevention, Gray Bruce, as the coordinator. And part of nothing going wrong is there. So we are the Local Violence Against Women Community Coordinating Committee. We have more than 40 member organizations represented across our Committee of the Whole and subcommittees. Violence Prevention, Gray Bruce, was originally founded in the mid-'90s and has had a number of names in that time as well as variable funding. But we have persisted with the goal of bringing together and the various sectors and organizations that are working to prevent gender-based violence and respond to gender-based violence. For those of you who may not be familiar with the term, gender-based violence includes all violence that is motivated by or targets people because of their gender or their sex. So that includes violence against women and the various forms of violence, whether that's intimate partner violence, domestic violence, sexual violence. any and all of the above. We recognize that the roots of violence are common, and so we can't address just one branch of the tree when the roots are shared. We also work to raise public awareness about the issues and to encourage community participation in violence prevention and response. That work takes the form of meetings of the whole quarterly, as well as subcommittee and project-focused work, looking specifically at domestic and sexual violence, anti-human trafficking work, elder abuse prevention, collaborative protocols to improve the way that we work together, and public outreach and communication. Most recently, you may have seen in the news in the fall that we hosted an anti-human trafficking community forum, which included two events, one for the public at large, one for service providers. A recording of that is available on our website to improve community awareness. We release articles throughout the 16 Days of Activism and participate in the December 6 vigils. We recently concluded an Art for Change contest, which saw submissions of art by young people from grades seven to 12, as well as adults with developmental and intellectual disabilities. We asked them to create art about the theme of healthy and unhealthy relationships, and they created some really amazing projects there. We are also in the midst right now of an elder abuse poster and presentation campaign, as well as releasing the latest snapshot numbers that we collected. For those of you who were sitting on council, I presented just over a year ago about our first snapshot project, and I'm here today with an update. The elder abuse resource poster was funded in part by, well, in totality, by the Community Foundation of Gray Bruce. We've designed two posters that collect in one place in a large font the resources and organizations available to support elders or seniors experiencing violence in Gray Bruce. There are two sizes of the poster available, and we're in the process of reaching out to make them, well, to distribute them widely across Gray and Bruce Counties. Last week, I got a call from the Bruce County Libraries, and we delivered 51 posters to them this week. We're also, as part of this awareness project, doing public outreach and engagement, and folks can request either posters or presentations anytime between now and March within the lifetime of that grant. We are partnering with Elder Abuse Prevention Ontario, which is a province-wide organization to share that information and their expertise. And we know that during the pandemic, calls to their senior safety line, which is available to seniors who might be experiencing violence or people who would be supporting them for more information and for supporting connection to services, those calls are up 300% over the course of the pandemic. So it's a timely project, and we welcome anyone who might be watching or participating in the meeting today who would be interested to reach out for more information and those resources. I also come, as I mentioned, with a snapshot of gender-based violence and violence against women for, in this time, the fiscal years of 2018 to 2019 and 2019, 2020. There are a lot of numbers here. I trust that you'll have had a chance to review some of them in preparation for the meeting today. Some of the key numbers to look at are the rates of incidents reported to police and the number of people who are seeking support through crisis and helplines, as well as through medical care. We know that the majority of people who experience domestic violence and sexual violence don't reach out for support, that they live with the pain and the consequence of that on their own for a variety of reasons, because of stigma, because of shame, because of fear of the perpetrator, as well as barriers to accessing care and service, which in Gray and Bruce Counties are large. We have a, we're bigger than PEI, as we're fond of pointing out. And it's easy to think that these issues are historic, that we're past the point of violence in relationships, keeping women in the home and out of the workforce, or that after Me Too, no one is having a hard time speaking about or connecting with supports around sexual violence. But that's not the case. In 2019, for that fiscal year, there was an average of 2.4 calls a day to police services in Gray and Bruce Counties for support related to domestic violence. During that same time, there were more than 26 calls a day to the crisis and helplines run by the various VAW organizations, so violence against women organizations in Gray and Bruce Counties. The numbers for that particular line were included or provided by Women's House, Serving Bruce Gray, by the Women's Center, and by Kibeshewin at Soging First Nation. We know that these issues are continuing, and one of the ways that they continue is through the silence that surrounds them. So it's only by talking about and raising awareness about and asking the question of how do we address them that we can address these issues. People are disproportionately experiencing violence when they are also marginalized. And that can be by race, by education, by age, by gender, sex, or gender identity, as well as just by where they live. You just heard a presentation about the trouble with getting Internet service to people living early, and the ability for rural folks to access service and support also continues to be an issue. This is just the tip of the iceberg, but we release it to start the conversation and to encourage people to participate in that work. And as leaders in our communities, there are particular things that you can do. We also know that because that's the most recent snapshot of 2019, 2020, ended with data at the end of March, that that does not capture the current reality. The unofficial reports from our partner and member organizations are that rates of violence are increasing, at the same time that it's more difficult for people to access services and supports. And the pandemic is taking up a lot of space in headlines. There's been a lot of great work done to mobilize and support everyone from businesses to service providers and the community at large. But there's more work yet to do with all of these barriers. It's, it, the rates of domestic violence and intimate partner violence increasing during this time are for a variety of reasons. When people spend more time at home with their abusers, they're more at risk. With economic stress and the inability to access the other formal and informal supports that help to stabilize people's lives, it's harder to cope or to access the kind of harm reduction that folks rely on in their day-to-day lives. We also know that women are disproportionately being impacted by this pandemic, especially economically, as they're more likely to work at higher-risk, low-wage frontline positions. We talk about essential workers and hero pay, but the value of the work that women are doing in our communities and in our society are not always represented in the stability and the support that they receive as a result of that work. It's been labeled a she-session, that women are dropping into the economy more quickly and re-entering more slowly. It demands a she-covery, and it's up to us as communities to figure out what that's going to look like. I've spoken about the decreases in informal and formal supports. There are just more barriers right now, as well as more stresses as kids are at home. And to see a full report on gender-based violence in Canada during the COVID-19 pandemic and other issues and recommendations, I've included a link to the Centre for Research and Education on Violence Against Women, which comes out of London, Ontario. And that brings us specifically to what municipalities can do to support violence prevention. Some of this work you're already doing. I was really excited to see the announcements about housing supports in the news over the last couple of weeks, with Gray County directing funding to support affordable, accessible housing. All of your policy decisions impact people's lives. And anytime that's the case, it requires a lens of the social determinants of health and a gender-based analysis lens. So a policy that might seem great for the bottom line from a 30,000-foot perspective might not be equitably supporting people who are marginalized by their sex or their gender. By reducing the vulnerability and marginalization of the most vulnerable people, we do better work to supporting safety for all. As employers, we know that employers have legal obligations to provide domestic violence response training and safety to their employees. And you folks also have the potential in all your fields of work to advocate for projects that support equity and remove barriers to access to the things that make people's lives safer. So I was going to say I stand before you today, but I'm on your screen before you today. Just to bring that back to the agenda, with so many pressing issues facing our municipalities and our county, your schedules are often full of the material. And it's important to remember that the social and those matters of safety are always there underlying those issues as well. And a lot of this work is also being supported, full kudos, by the Community Safety and Well-being Plan. That has a lot of potential to help us to improve access to supports for folk. And it's up to us to make sure that this work is ongoing. We're never done. We're never done. And that, I think, wraps things up for me. I would love to open the floor up to any questions. I may have had a couple of coffees this morning. So if I went too quickly and there's anything that I can help to clarify, I'm happy to do that. And I'm really grateful for the time to present to you and speak about these issues in such a public way to leadership in our community.
Well, thank you very much for that update. It's very timely indeed, because I was just reading, I believe, yesterday that Hanover Police Officer was assaulted while she was responding to, allegedly, I should say, while she was responding to a domestic call. I see Counselor O'Leary had his hand. Counselor O'Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, John. Thanks for your presentation. Just had a question. Like, some of these numbers are just scary, but 190 women turned away from shelter. What exactly does that mean? Sent back into a violent situation, or is there, like, what happens there?
The particulars of what happens in a situation like that depend on the situation and resources at the time. The shelters locally work with other housing supports to try to find alternate safe places for them to be. But women and children are turned away when the rooms are full. And that's also an issue that's been aggravated during the COVID-19 pandemic as social or physical distancing and quarantine requirements have reduced capacity at the shelters. So what happens to those 100 and some women? It depends for each of them. Some people end up couch surfing. Some people end up in motels. The shelters work very hard to make sure that they're connecting women with other safe places. But when the rooms are full, there's not a lot that they can do.
Okay, thanks. And thanks again for your presentation.
Thank you. Counselor Potter?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. And to be honest, I'm heartened that the numbers aren't worse than they are, given the situation. Maybe we can be at least a little thankful for that, but they are bad. And what I'm wondering is, are you noticing that as time goes by, there is an increase? In other words, is there some growing urgency to do what we can? For example, more affordable housing, making that more of a priority than we have so far, more ways of dealing with these issues. We are limited, I realize, but I'm just worried that the urgency will grow as the pandemic goes along and people, maybe we've heard that some people are losing hope and getting even more frustrated. So are you seeing any sign of that?
Yeah, the COVID-19 pandemic has absolutely increased the urgency for many people. The challenge is that the kind of long-term solutions also take a long time to put into place. I really appreciate your reference to affordable housing there. That's a, it's a major barrier, not just for, and on a variety of levels. Women who don't have access to a safe, affordable place to be can, out of necessity, be forced to stay in abusive or unsafe relationships because it's that or homelessness in their eyes, well, and in their situations. There's also a backlog created as women in shelter struggle to find affordable places to move out to from the shelter. It means that the shelter stays lengthened as it becomes more difficult for folks to find affordable housing. So I would absolutely say that the urgency is there. Numbers can also be, it's complex, because as people, if people report more readily as there's less social stigma, then the numbers go up. So in some ways, in, over our lifetimes, we may hope that the number of reported incidences would go up to indicate that there's less silence and less people choosing not to or not being able to access support before we see an overall decrease. But that's on the scale of generations, really, as we know that intergenerational violence plays a big impact.
Thank you very much. Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and thanks very much, John, for the work that you do. In your presentation, you spoke about elder abuse. And I'm just wondering, is there any legislation, you know, there's certainly legislation that professionals need to report child abuse, but is there any legislation that requires people to report elder abuse? And also, you know, what organizations are out there to help support individuals that are suffering from elder abuse? Thank you.
So my understanding of responsibility to report is that that would be, that would absolutely apply in long-term care settings, but that elder abuse is like any other crime, where if, as community members, if we see it, we can report professionals, to my understanding. And this is where I'm a bit of a generalist, and so it would be worth, I don't want to speak out of turn, but to my understanding, if anyone is working with a vulnerable population and they perceive that person to be at risk or currently experiencing violence, that there are responsibilities to do something about that. I'm sure that that depends on the policies and protocols of specific organizations and sectors.
I noted Barb and Anne Marie are on deck, and I don't want to put you folks under pressure, but you may have something to add there. I don't believe that there's an equivalent to the Child and Family Services Act, which did require the abuse of children. But is there anything that you folks can add, either Barbara and Marie? Probably not. I didn't see any other.
It looks like Anne Marie may be trying to speak, but I don't.
She's on mute. Oh, she's not on mute. It just doesn't have sound.
I can't see her, so I can't tell. Is there any other questions while?
Barb does have her hand up as well.
Barb, yeah, Barb might have something to add there.
Go ahead, Barb.
I'll give it a shot, see if my volume is working. Can you hear me?
Perfectly, I can hear you, yes.
Okay, okay. I wanted to mention that we have our staff. We routinely remind staff that if there are indicators of circumstances of violence in homes that we do reach out to our partners, and we're very fortunate to have John and his folks, the shelters, the Women's Center, all kinds of partners that we meet regularly with. They're party to the Poverty Task Forces agencies as well. And so we're very interconnected, and we know we're not able to capture everything, but we do have a protocol. And so there are things that people are asking that would trigger the conversations when we have applications coming through for social assistance. We also have human trafficking work being done in our communities. So, you know, there are definitely incidents where staff are given an opportunity to be able to contribute and assist in those ways. But the mandate is very different for children. And so I would like to see some further work at a regulatory way, manner for this. But we do support our staff in doing so, and I know Anne Marie's part of that as well. Her team works alongside ours in the same capacity.
Thank you, Barb. I don't see any other hands up, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. No, sir, I don't see any either.
So I guess with that said, Mr. Farmer, I want to thank you very much. Very timely presentation and good discussion.
Yeah, thank you for your interest, and I'll be in touch when we have another snapshot in the future. Take care.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we are, I know that we have item 6B, the ambulance service review, on deck with Kevin. But I'm going to suggest, we've been sitting for an hour and 20 minutes. So I'm going to suggest that we take a short break. Would 10 minutes be sufficient? Just nod heads if you think that would be fine. I see a lot of nodding heads. So with that said, it's now 10:50. If we would come back at 11:00. And Kevin, you're on deck. Okay, folks? And Kevin, you're on deck. Okay, folks, see you in town.
Cameras and and microphones off, please.
Okay. Looks like most of us are back. We definitely have quorum. Are we live and able to go again, Rob? We are, I see, Madam Clerk nodding. Okay, I'm going to call us back together. We are now on item 6B, the ambulance service review final report. That is moved by Counselor Hutchison and seconded by Counselor Potter. Kevin McNabb, you have the floor.
Morning, Council, Warden. Can you just confirm you can see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. Okay, the first report is on our Ministry of Health Service Review that took place in 2019. So this report is for information. So doing in order to meet our legislative requirements, the paramedic service has to have a service review completed every three years. This report stems from our the service review in October of 2019. We didn't receive the final draft or final, sorry, final report until January 14th. So that was the delay in getting this to council. The the findings in the report indicate that we've met the requirements of the service review, and our license has been extended through till June 2nd, 2023. Generally, this process would take, you know, from the time they do the service review to the time we do all the follow up. You know, generally, if it's in the fall, we'd have it cleared up by the spring. But due to COVID, it took longer to do the to go through this process. The service review consists of a two day onsite review with Ministry of Health inspectors. They look at all aspects of the service, the administration, the operations, and their quality assurance program. They have people out in the field riding out with crews that are looking at our vehicles. They have a vehicle specialist come from the ministry. They more or less look at every aspect of the service and how we run our business. We don't ever know what the exact score is, but just based upon the findings, we know that we did well through the review. The final report does outline some observations that were noticed through the review. There were six observations noted and comparable to 2016, where we had four. All the observations that were reported have been addressed. And that's what takes part of the process is they they send the the draft report, and then we respond to that with our our follow up to the observations, and then we meet with an inspector again and close off the review. So all of those observations met a satisfactory conclusion. So this slide just gives you an idea of the service, how it performed against 2016 and also against the provincial average. So you'll see we have six observations. The majority of of the results are were 100%. But again, any anything less than 100% creates an observation. So we find this as a good learning of of time, and we can improve our processes through this. So that's just breaks it down between patient care areas, quality assurance, and administration. In 2000, again, 2016, we had four observation, and 2019, we had six. The provincial average is 10.6. So the success of our service review really falls to everyone, the paramedics, the management team, county council, and CIO, and also the support of all different departments, transportation, finance, human resources, JS, IT. Again, every we we want us to work with every department within the county. It's really a big team. And thank you to everybody that's assisted with us in this. Even though we were successful, we still look at ways to continually improve. And our goal is always to go into this with no observations. And we run the service each day as if the service review happened tomorrow. So we have processes in place that we we continue to follow. And again, we try to make them better wherever we can, but overall, very successful review.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Council, are there any questions? Maybe we could get the full screen again, so I can see everyone. There we go. I don't see anyone's hands. If that's the case, I'm going to call the question on the motion to receive this report. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next, we're on item C, the Gray County Community Paramedic Program Expansion. That is being moved by Counselor Hutchison and seconded by, oh, no, excuse me. That has been moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor Gamble. And Kevin, once again, you have the floor.
Okay, second one here. This is about an expansion proposal for the Community Paramedic Program. This is a fairly new request. We didn't get the information till early to mid December. And it's it's around for us putting in a proposal about expanding our community paramedic program. So this is a report just to be received for information. So our community paramedic program that we play an important role supporting vulnerable patients in their homes. We provide home visits as a part of our community paramedic program to deliver care under the the direction of a physician with an expanded scope to treat people living with chronic disease. The whole idea is to support these people in the home and keep them out of the hospital. We've been operating community paramedic program for over six years now. So the mystery of of long term care, which is new for us, because generally comes from the Ministry of Health. It is reached out to us through the Ministry of Health as well, looking for proposals to expand our community paramedic program. This program is to work with the local health integration network, or local LIN, as a capacity enhancer to work alongside community care, to assist people, patients with higher needs in the community, and that it allow them to stay in the community. The patients they'd like us to focus on, and I would argue say that's most likely the patients that we see today in our program. So it's a good fit, are people that are on the waitlist for long term care. They've been assessed to be eligible for long term care, or people that could soon be eligible for long term care. So we've been selected as one of the municipalities to put a proposal in for this initiative. It is 100% funded, and it's a three and a quarter year commitment, which hopefully would go longer. The the county's proposal includes a plan to implement the program by March 31st, so it is a short turnaround. The annual funding allotment for this is up to $1 million in the first quarter of this year. Before the government fiscal, it would allow us to bring paramedics in, train them, and prepare, as well as to purchase some capital equipment to help start the program. If our proposal is accepted, the province will forward the agreement to be approved by council. But we hope that it will be approved in the next few weeks, so if we can start the program before the end of March. We put a proposal that will allow community paramedics to be across the county. It's something that we've wanted for quite some time. Right now, we do our best to focus on as many areas as we can, but most of it is focused in the On Sound and surrounding Georgian plus Me for Chatsworth area through the On Sound Family Health Team. But this would allow us to reach out to other community health centers, family health teams, BOSS, and then even individual primary care physicians to offer this program. And we'd hope to be able to offer it to another 300 to 350 patients. And that could bring our roster close to 500 patients with this initiative. To expand the program, there is a capital investment. The biggest expense is around vehicles and to lesser extent, ice stat machines. The cardiac monitor defibrillators would be purchased in the first quarter, but there is a fair capital request. To maximize boots boots on the ground, what we did is built the budget so that the money would be brought back over the next five to seven years instead of upfront paying it. There is a bit of a risk here, because the program is only guaranteed for three years. But our thoughts are in hope that it would carry on similar to what the program we have today. And if not, we would look at either using that equipment within our 911 system or or selling it if there wasn't a need for it. So we're looking at building upon our well established community paramedic program. We do have strong partnerships in the community, and we hope to be able to make it stronger to support the patients that we serve today. And again, spread it out to the entire county. And again, spread it out to the entire county. And now taking questions.
Thank you very much, Kevin. I'm gonna look through council to see if there are any questions. I see councillor Mackey, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and thanks, Kevin, for the report. I think this is a tremendous opportunity. Just curious about how many other pilot sites are the is the province looking at?
There was initially five and then with this one, I believe it's 29. I'm not 100% sure, but I believe it's 29. What they looked at is services that are already established, will be able to get up and going with community paramedic programs. Hopefully, that the plan will be those that all municipalities will have this type of ability to move this forward.
Councillor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Comment and then two questions. My first comment is I'm always really leery of these programs that the province is going to fund for a limited period of time and then we'll see whether it works or not. Well, my way of thinking, this program has huge potential and it's a it's a great idea. So I really hope the province would carry on with the funding after the three years. But there is Kevin has noted, there's no guarantee. My two questions is first question is what type of vehicle would the paramedics be using when they are doing community paramedicine? And and the second question is as we build the roster of staff to look after these folks, would those paramedics be cycled, so to speak, through frontline paramedics as well, or would it be people dedicated exclusively to paramedicine?
So the first question is around the vehicle. We do have a vehicle right now that we've actually spec that of the city of Ottawa. It's a smaller first response vehicle. It's all wheel drive. It's an believe it's an Explorer. So so it's like, but the big thing is for, you know, internet of driveways and stuff like that and winter weather, it's nice to have that all wheel drive. It's fairly compact. It meets the needs of of what what equipment we carry. We do outfit this to be an emergency response vehicle. So there is a benefit on that side as well that when we add these extra vehicles, they listen to the radio. And really what we're adding is we have one out there right now and another three. If a cardiac arrest comes in around the corner, or if there's a high priority emergency call, they will do first response. So we it is a capacity enhancer even for us in the 911 side, even though that's not their primary role that they become available to us for stuff like that. So it's very positive on that side. And in fact, so that kind of goes into the next question. All paramedics that work in this field are considered primary care paramedics with intravenous certification. They need to have those two things. And so what we generally have paramedics that support this in a full time capacity. And then we also train people to be in a part time for backfill because as much as we say having that having a full time staff, if they go on vacation, it's 100% backfill. There's no gaps. So we can't really have gaps if we're carrying that many patients. So so we do have a part time and a full time complement. The full timers, though, especially when we have capacity, we've we've noticed even when first response and certain things around the community side of things to keep your skills up, it is good to cycle through the 911. So to give them options to do 911 shifts to two to four a month. And also there's someone like to also circulate through our alternate rate supervisor role to give some of those opportunities. So so there is a bit of it. It is a a combination role. And there there. So there will be ones that are primarily in in community paramedic with some opportunities to do 911 shifts. Then there the part time are generally part time staff or full time staff working in the 911 that backfill in the community paramedic role.
Excellent. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, councillor Potter.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation, Kevin. A couple of questions. The first one is my understanding is that these programs keep a lot of people out of hospitals and in a way pay for themselves. Do you have any information on that?
Yeah, they have been shown to keep people out of the hospital, keep them out of emerged, drop 911 calls. There is a study by Queens that we we had 500 patients. We had over 100 patients in that study. It showed a very positive return on investment in this program. We see it every day. We we work with the patients. We talk to them about their disease condition. We want them to call us, you know, three days before they reach that emergency where they would have called 911 in the past where we can send a community paramedic out, do the assessment, connect with their community care provider and then offer treatment. Generally, it's around antibiotics for respiratory infection. Maybe prednisone for that to help them breathe, different inhalers could be an adjustment to their water pills. We do blood work, you know, those types of things. Now we've went into the palliative side of things where we do acute symptom management in the home as well to keep them in the home. So it keeps broadening out and I I think that as we learn and grow, there will probably be more opportunities as well.
That's great. That's good to hear because, you know, I I think the value of things is more important than the cost and this one has a high value. Secondly, you do work with the health teams. As you know, we cross over into Simcoe County and Collingwood area here. So is there an overlap or how do we deal with that? Was that crossover?
Well, as far as like working with Bruce County, like experience with them. If if the patient is a is a family primary care provider within Gray, we will see them outside of the county. There's not very many of those, but there there are. I know that Simcoe County has a community paramedic program. Bruce is actually working towards implementing one. I think there is sharing back and forth, you know, it it makes most sense for the where the primary care provider is because that's who gives us the medical delegation where that would come from. But so there is a cross border mechanism with especially with our surrounding Dufferin has a CP program. Simcoe Wellington does to a certain extent. And then Bruce County is moving ahead in that area too. So again, my my goal hopefully is to see this grow across the province.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And just to follow up on councillor Potter's remarks, it might be good, Kevin, for us to you know, record some of those stories. So for example, patient A over the last year visited the emergency ward X amount of times or called for 911 assistance this amount of times. And since the community paramedic involvement, it's been reduced from, you know, 10 to two or one.
And that has been looked at in the past. If you read the Queen study, they actually talk about that. They reference the number of calls and if that will be part of this is this this program will be continued to be evaluated. So those are one of the things that what they will be continuing to look at.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I will then call the question on the motion to receive. Anyone opposed? That too is carried. Thank you very much, Kevin. Okay, we're on to item D. And that is the updated code of conduct. We have madam clerk on deck. It's being moved by councillor O'Leary and seconded by councillor Carlton. Now, clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. As council will recall, this, the original report was presented in late 2019 regarding the adoption of a new council code of conduct. The code was written by the county's integrity commissioners, principals integrity and provides an outline of rules contemplated within the code as well as some commentary and examples for to provide further information. As a brief overview to the original report from 2019, the code provides for more definitions of clarification. And it's guided by a number of rules set out within both the municipal act and the municipal conflict of interest act, among other pieces of legislation. It establishes a formal and informal complaint process and a reporting requirement to integrity commissioner and an updated complaint form. Gray County Council did have a code of conduct, does have a code of conduct which was completed prior to the requirement under the municipal act to have an integrity commissioner. And with principles integrity being hired as the county's integrity commissioner in 2018, the code of conduct needed to be update. The updated code provides for the new requirements under the act. When the code was first presented in late 2019, the bylaw, the code was endorsed, the bylaw was deferred pending training for council by principles integrity. This training was completed at the end of 2019 and it was opened up to a number of our member municipalities as well. Both Jeff and Janice from principles integrity came to the county to Gray Roots and we had a very successful and in depth training session at that time. Since the original report was completed, the only changes made to the code of conduct are in relation to the commentary related to rule number 15. And that's in on page 73 of your package. It now includes information related to two tier systems relative to the council decision making process as well as information related to potential conflicts and legal challenges or litigation processes. It is important to remember that this is a living document and it can shift and change as legislation is updated and new councils are sworn in. The code of conduct will be brought forward at least once during each term of council for review and updating as necessary, as well as when new legislation or policies are enacted that require updates to be made. I am working with principles integrity to bring them virtually to an upcoming council meeting to provide their annual report to council. And that will give council an opportunity to ask them any questions in the work that they've done over the last year or year and a half. And if the report and the code is endorsed, a bylaw will be brought forward then for council's consideration. Thank you.
Better on mute. Councillor, so I see you first.
Yes, I want to thank staff for bringing this forward and particularly some clarification as to the two how things work in a two tier system. I believe I had raised that issue. But I don't see any clarification on the legal aspect of it. That really hasn't changed and it's not really addressed in the new rule 15 commentary. And my question at the time, I think, related to what happens when you're the mayor of a lower tier that's in legal dispute with the county and that at the time was an LPAD hearing with regards to where we were on opposite sides of that and the the county had allowed a rezoning. We had not agreed to it and so that's why I thought, you know, when you're the mayor of a lower tier and you are in legal proceedings, rule 15 would seem to mean you're out of order. I am glad that there is a bit more commentary, but I think that's something that needs to be addressed. Whether you can, you know, as the mayor of a lower tier, you know, you're involved in the legal proceeding because, you know, that's what council has wanted you to do. And you know, it does say that you can't, council can't compel you to do anything at the county level, but it still seems to be a murky area. And, you know, we don't have the problem anymore at the task force level because the Blue Mountains Task Force, of course, has been wound up, but there is the new commentary on section 15 says the higher obligation in that case would be to exercise due care and diligence in determining how to vote in the best interest of the municipality where the vote is being taken. That would mean county council. You have to put the county first while taking into account the context provided by positions taken by the other municipalities. So you know, that that is an interesting question and particularly when it comes to where you have a task force like the Hanover on sound task force, which is you know, focused on on sound and handover issues and that would imply that you know, there could be a difficult situation created for members of that task force. So I'm just wondering if some clarity on that might be warranted.
Madam Clerk. Through you, Mr. Warden. It's certainly something that I can ask principles integrity to speak to when they come and provide their annual report and provide that clarity. We did speak about it at the orientation is that, you know, you are elected at the local level. But when you come to county council, you are looking at the council as a whole and any task forces. So for example, the Hanover Owen Sound, as much as it's it's looking at items related to Owen Sound and Hanover, the resolution originally was and its impact to Gray County as a whole. So we are looking at the entire county at that point. So it certainly counts or so ever it's something that I can specifically ask principles integrity to provide a little bit more clarity on when they come to present their annual report later this year.
Thank you, madam clerk, and that would be much appreciated.
Great, thank you, sir. I don't see any other hands. Is there anyone else with questions? Check my other screen. Nope, I don't see any hands. So that said, I will, councillor, whoever your hand is up again.
Oh, I forgot. I forgot one thing, you know, as when we had our one on one meeting, Mr. Warden. The we, you know, that it was an interesting idea that perhaps, you know, if county councillors were elected separately from the mayors and deputy mayors, then they wouldn't have this issue. So I'm just throwing that out there. Maybe that's something we could talk about before the next election.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I do not see anyone. If that's the case, then I will call the question on the motion. Is there anyone opposed? See none, that is carried. We will move on. Next, we're dealing with item E, the Development Charges Steering Committee Terms of Reference. Madam Clerk, you're on, no. This is going to be Randy, isn't it? It is being moved by councillor Potter and seconded by councillor Patterson. And Randy?
Thank you, Warden Hicks, and good morning, everyone. So the the county's development charge bylaws are set to expire on January 1st, 2022. And municipalities are required to do a development charges background study update and to update the development charge bylaws every five years. Development charges allow the county to better plan for capital related services attributed to development and growth by ensuring that funding is available to undertake the necessary capital projects. As part of the previous development charges review, a development charge steering committee had had been set up to oversee and provide direction to the consultant and staff in preparing the updated background study and bylaws. And staff are recommending that a similar process be taken for this review. The the 2021 capital budget includes funds to hire a consultant to update the background study and the DC bylaws. And and this report provides terms of reference for the the steering committee and recommends that these be endorsed and that members be appointed, including the warden plus four county councillors. And that's all really with respect to this matter. And obviously, once the DC steering committee is set up and the consultant's been retained, then we'll be obviously getting into more detailed discussions about the development charges review.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
I will note that the the terms of reference call for for council members. I did receive interest from councillors Carlton, Kevany and Woodbury. So there is one spot position if anyone else is interested in this committee. And I think in discussing with Randy, the meetings are going to be three or four at the most over a a few months. Am I correct in that, Randy? So it's not, it's not like it's going to be every month. It's it's going to be a beginning, a middle and an end.
Yeah, that's how we see it unfolding. That's that's consistent with previous reviews for sure.
Thank you for that clarity, councillor, so ever.
Yes, I'd volunteer for that committee.
Thank you for doing so. And I don't see anyone else with their hand up. So we won't need to have an election. If that's the case, then do we need to have a formal motion, madam clerk, with respect to the members?
We will just
Is that covered by the main motion?
Yeah, it'll be covered by the main motion and will just include that councillors Carlton, Kevney, Woodbury and so ever along with yourself are the members of this steering committee.
Excellent. And thank you very much. I don't see any other hands up. So I'm going to call the question on the motion as presented. Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. On to item F, the loan agreement with Owen Sound Housing Company. And Marie is on deck for that, and the movers are Counselor Hutchison and seconded by Counselor Burley. Anne Marie?
Good morning, Council.
Morning.
Last year, I was before council asking for a. Loan in the amount of $3,250,000 to support the development of 60. Affordable end-market units being built in Owen Sound. Since this time, I have received a request from Owen Sound Housing Corporation for an increase in the amount of the loan. They did go out to tender and Alan Hastings Limited, a local company was. Successful bidder. The project did come in over what they had estimated. Their consultant thought it would come in around $11 million for the build and it came in at $12,543,000. So they are asking that the short-term loan be increased to $4 million.
Anne Marie, can I just interrupt you for a quick second? It seems that your sound is going sort of in waves. I don't know. That's my experience anyways, that it's soft and then. Fine again. I see other heads nodding. Is there anything on your end that's causing that?
I'm at work, so I would, it's not my internet. Okay, I'll try again. So I'll back up to the point where we had previously approved a loan for $3,250,000. Since then, they have gone out for tender. Alan Hastings Limited was the successful bidder. For the tender, it did come in over the estimated amount. Their consultant had originally thought the building would come in around $11 million. It has come in around $12,500,000. So they are asking that we increase the short-term loan to $4 million. So this is just asking that we rescind the original resolution of $3.25 million. Increase it to $4 million and that it be over a maximum of two-year period instead of one, just due to COVID and. Delays, just giving them opportunity to to get the project built. And there is an agreement attached and there will also be a security put on. For the loan on the on the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You are on mute, Mr. Warden. What are we going to learn, right? Thank you very much, Anne Marie. I'll repeat, and Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Anne Marie. Because the. The bid has come in at 12:05, does that include contingencies? In there? And have they, and have they been increased in a similar proportion so that the 4 million that we're hoping to extend them? They won't come back in six months and say, oh, we need four and a quarter million. I mean, I'm in support of extending this loan, but I just want to make sure that this is enough.
Yes, so the proposal that did come from Alan Hastings did have a larger contingency than what the consultant had originally proposed.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Anne Marie, is this particular project a bonded job?
I would assume. I'm sorry, I don't have that information offhand, but that's normally something that is asked for in our our tenders. And so they use a similar process we do.
Okay, I would think this, I'm just want to make sure that the county is a part of that documentation for bonding.
I will certainly look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Seeing none, then I will call the question on the motion to rescind, and we have the new amount in place. Anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. I'm going to go back now to the consent agenda. Dealing first with item A, the Hanover Owen Sound Task Force Minutes of January 11th and 15th. I'm going to look for a mover. I'm going to suspect that Counselor Soever will move.
I'll move.
And I need a seconder, Counselor Burley. Counselor Soever, you have the floor.
Yes, the reason I pull these minutes is, you know, I just want to thank the task force for doing all this work and. There is a couple of things. One was a little ambiguous in the. January 11th minutes on page three. The, where Ms. Wingrove spoke about the provincial offenses, fine revenue and. So it seems like the municipality lays the charge, gets the money back, then administration fees. There a policy on that? And I would also notice that the fine revenue from traffic offenses is used to offset court operation costs. We do pay extra for an OPP officer that is dedicated to traffic and so. Is there, you know, information as to, you know, how hard everybody's working on? You know. Getting some of that revenue in so that we can offset some of those. Offenses, because certainly I think, you know, the court security costs that are borne by Owen Sound could be offset by additional revenue there. The other thing is. When we're talking about the casino. It says the calls for visitors to the casino. Of approximately 100, 800 to 1,000 per day is. That's not the number of calls, is it? It's it's the number of visitors. Yes, and it says the calls spike during the day from 10:30 AM to 5 PM. And rise during the progression of the week with the highest number of calls on Friday. So how many calls would there be? When I saw eight, it says calls and I saw 800 to 1,000, I thought that's a lot, but. Does anybody have an idea? Because it is kind of ambiguous there.
No, you're on mute.
Mr. Warden, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I see Counselor Patterson waving her hand. Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and yes, it is a little ambiguous. It is 800 to 1,000 visitors to the casino. And the actual calls, I don't have a number, but would not be anywhere near that. And those those calls actually happen outside of the casino in the parking lot. Oh, and for reference, I can probably find that out for you for the next meeting, but. I think if we just added the word see, the casino sees approximately 800 to 1,000 visitors should take care of that.
Thank you. I was suspecting it would be, that would be the case. So the casino obviously is a good source of revenue for Hanover with about $1.4 million revenue a year, according to the 2019 FIR. You know, obviously with the number of calls, it also adds to the policing costs, so. I think, you know, that's a, I'm hoping the task force, you know, looks at some of these costs as well. That's all I have on the minutes of the 11th. On the 15th, I would just note that the minutes of the 15th have on the title. It said January 1st and not 15th, so I think we need to change that and that's all I had. That's why I pulled those items.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Quite right about the first. Did we answer all of your questions?
Yes.
Excellent. Any other questions from anyone else? Then I'm going to call the question. Is there anyone opposed to approval? Seeing none, that is passed. We'll move next to item 5C, the Swift Project Update. I'm going to assume Counselor Soever that you'll move it.
Yes.
Looking for a seconder. Seconded by Counselor Mill. And Counselor Soever, again, you have the floor.
Yeah, I greatly appreciate the this update from Swift. You know, I, we've been asking for more information for a while and. Certainly, this is a great improvement and I'm wondering, there was talk. For some time of the Swift representative coming to council so we could ask questions and and find out more. Is that still in the works?
I'm going to turn to Madam CAO on that. I noted it was in the works of pre-pandemic. Yes. But I I think that since the pandemic, it's been off the table, correct?
Yes, and I think we were, you know, prior to the award of the Gray County projects, when things were still. Under that assessment. I think there was, you know, a little bit of reluctance there. Was, wouldn't have been the most fulsome update for council while they were still considering the responses to the RFP, but. Certainly, all of that is behind us now and projects are moving forward, as you heard earlier in our reading today. Are there specific areas of interest, Counselor Soever, that that you're wanting to have Barry focus on? If you can let me know, then certainly I'll reach out to him again and see if he can make himself available.
Yeah, certainly. I'm very encouraged with the rate of progress and the number of projects that that are now been initiated. But, you know, I have expressed my concerns and I continue to that some of the projects. May be a little unusual, given the branding of Swift, where it's rural broadband and I see, you know, even on the website. They're 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 moving more toward that branding. But, you know, there are a number of projects that when you look at the projects, particularly the Garifraxa Woods one in the corner of Orangeville, which is. Subdivision of wealthy individuals with an average, as I said earlier, of property. When you look at the real estate listings for that thing, they average $2.8 million and you're servicing about 40 homes per kilometer. And you're getting picking up high-end customers, so I would just wanted to, you know. Ask what can be done to move more toward the truly rural areas. Because once you pick a few of those subdivisions out, it makes an area, if they're already serviced. Then the adjacent rural area is far less attractive than if you could. Say, okay, if you want that high-end subdivision with all these wealthy people that are likely to buy a whole package of services. Then you've got to service, you know, to bring your average density down, you've got to service the surrounding rural area and. I think that's a very important thing and and like and more about Swift 2.0 as well.
Okay, I will, I will provide those comments to Mr. Field and ask him if he would attend. To a point that was made by the warden earlier today. I think that it's probably important for us to review the circumstances and the criteria under which Swift was provided. Funding to begin with, and, you know, to some degree, their hands are very tied. They need to meet the criteria. That was set out for them by the federal and provincial governments. I will ask Barry to, you know, to speak to that when he comes. I'm a little bit uncomfortable about the. The focus on the socioeconomic. Place that individual people face. I don't think that that enters into. The discussion. It really is about the number of premises being served, not whether or not they are. Well-resourced or not, so I'll ask him to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I would just add that Swift endorses the hashtag. Broadband for all. Counselor Mill.
Thank you. I just had a very somewhat similar concern when I saw the downtown core of Drumore being serviced and yet those of us in the suburbs get. Get none, so anyway, it's. I'm just tongue-in-cheek there a little bit. Thank you.
Well, I can agree with that. If if the criteria said if you want to do downtown, you got to extend it another baseball throw. Then certainly that would be a good suggestion.
Absolutely.
I would certainly please Counselor Mill. Okay, are there any other questions on this item? I do not see any, so I will call the question. Is there anyone opposed to approval of this item? Seeing none, I'm going to say that that is Carrie. And we are moving to item E next, the Blue Mountains Village Association, that letter of support moved by Counselor Soever and seconded by. Looking for a hand, Counselor Potter. And Counselor Soever, once again, you have the floor.
Yes, so I really appreciate this letter being issued. I was authorized to write Premier Ford with a similar letter from the town of the Blue Mountains. Certainly, our resort has, there is, let me start by saying with the COVID stats around, there certainly is a need for a lockdown. And, you know, I think the provincial government was correct in in bringing in lockdown. I wish they would have done something more strict sooner. And we wouldn't be in the situation we're in. Australia did. A real lockdown where you could only be in your house for an hour a day and they managed to squash the thing and. They, you know, instituted new lockdowns in Sydney, for instance, when cases reached 148 in the entire Sydney. Area in in a week, so, you know, they they moved earlier and quicker. But with regard to the Blue Mountain Resort and the village, certainly, they've been very responsible all through the pandemic. They've they've instituted. Protocols and procedures all summer. They they painted all their sidewalks, so it was one-way traffic. They they brought in wearing a face masks mandatory far before anybody else. There were a lot of protocols and Dr. Era informs me that there has been no documented transmission in any of our tourist businesses of COVID. As far as that we can tell from his contact tracing, so. He, I did ask him about that when I was writing my letter to Premier Ford and. So the resort's been very responsible and they've worked really hard in putting together protocols. Which you see in the letter, reduce capacity, the wearing of masks even outside in the village. Closing down all common areas except for the washrooms inside, so people would actually have to put their boots on, out at their car, go on the hill. Limited opportunity to gather and, you know, I think that. They they're doing an excellent job in preparing for a safe reopening, so our focus is really, you know. Let's have the local medical officers of health be in charge of a safe reopening, whereas. The one thing we don't want to have in the resource, the resort has expressed concerns about as well. Is we don't want the province just to say, okay, it's closed and now it's open and all of a sudden we get hundreds of thousands of people up here. On a Saturday, if the reopening was, say, on a Friday, it would be a disaster. So the resort is talking about. You know, having some maturity that, you know, there is a plan for the reopening and maybe phasing it in starting on a Monday. And they already have a plan for pass holders only, so it would be the people that regularly ski here. And you wouldn't expect to get a large influx of day day trippers because there just wouldn't be the skiing. I mean, no more than we're already seeing on all our trails and things, but so I just wanted to provide a bit of. Color on that and certainly we continue to work with Dr. Era and the resort to make sure that there is a plan for a safe reopening. And I think one of the things that really highlighted to me looking at the statistics is the the town of Blue Mountains. Relative to its number of households. Other than Georgian Bluffs and in Chatsworth, has the lowest incidence rate of COVID per household, like total cases. Since the beginning of the pandemic, and if there was really a problem with tourism and. Visitors and seasonal residents, then you would expect us to have the highest rate, so. I think everything the resort and we're doing seems to be working and thanks goes to Dr. and helping us implement those procedures. And so I really do support this letter.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with comments to add? Thank you very much. Um, anyone else with comments to add? Thank you, then I'm going to call the question. Is there anyone opposed? I see none, so I'm gonna say that that too is carried. Okay, we're on to item number seven now. Is there any other business? I see councillor Potter. Go ahead.
I think I accidentally hit the button. I didn't mean to, sorry about that.
That's all right, councillor Mill.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick question to the clerk. I'm wondering uh, where that notice of motion for the land acknowledgement uh, landed.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, that report is just about finished, and I should have it at the, either the first or second meeting in February.
Excellent, most excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
See councillor Mill, it's not all bad in your, in your world.
And no one ever suggested that it's all bad in my world. It's just some bad.
Anyone else with any other uh, business? I would just like to perhaps under other business uh, give kudos uh, to one person around our horseshoe. And that's councillor Desai, who I think does a terrific uh, job of um, reviewing the package. And getting questions that he has, uh, you know, on the agenda in advance to staff. And sometimes he'll even copy the warden. Um, and I think it's a, a good thing. Um, I would encourage councillors, if you have uh, questions uh, with respect to the package. It might be a good idea to do as councillor Desai uh, regularly does. Uh, put out your question to staff so they can, you know, come uh, fulsome, prepared, uh, be able to assist. Uh, and perhaps even address those questions when they make their presentation of their, um, of their reports. I know councillor Mill, you, you're dying to comment about uh, my complimenting councillor Desai.
Don't encourage him. Don't encourage him.
All right, is there anyone else with any other business? I see none. Uh, and I'm moving down to item number eight, any notices of motion? I do not see any, and so we have just one item left. And that's a motion to adjourn, that's moved by councillor Burley and seconded by councillor Potter. Anyone opposed? I see none, so that's carried. Thank you very much, and we are done before noon. Wow.